Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Is everything running over there? Bob? Welcome to City Council meeting. This is a regular City Council meeting of Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is six thirty. Would you stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance led by a council person? Raise your.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with all nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience and persons who have signed a speaker's card located table at the back of the training room or the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by four P. M. on the day of meeting. On any agenda item or any subject matter, it will be read in the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct and disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law should be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. I've had a request by at least two folks that said they would like it possible to speak right before the item they want to talk about. That I don't think is a problem for us. We can do that this evening. All right. Next thing on the agenda, items not on the agenda, we don't have any that I've got a card on up here. Brad has got some from some folks that left notes for us because they couldn't be here tonight. They're all three from his ward. I'll let him read these and get them into the record first.
Lynn Powers, sixty-six, blue hair in. I want to thank City Council for taking on the difficult task of short-term rentals. I read the plan, and although I do not believe it goes far enough, I heartily support it and the efforts of the team that put it together. We need to keep our neighborhoods as neighborhoods, not as commercial enterprises. The cleanup and complaints that take place after a rental should not be the responsibility of anyone but the homeowner and/or the manager, and the plan makes sure of that. This also gives the police and the city the ability to contact someone responsible if there are violations or suspicious activity. It is a fair plan for all. Thank you for all your efforts. Lynn and Steve Powers. Patrick Kane, eleven-twenty-three East Cedar Street. I would like to thank the city manager, I would like to thank the city manager for making additional changes to the proposed short-term rental ordinance, the most significant of which is the grandfathering existing accessory use rentals. That change is greatly appreciated. I still fundamentally disagree with the need for this ordinance, as it does not address a single issue that isn't already covered by existing ordinances. The bottom line is this ordinance is simply another way for the city to reach into its citizens' pockets to fund more government overreach. With that said, I know City Council will approve the ordinance, so I am requesting once again that daytime visitors be removed from the occupant definition and recreational vehicles be removed from the short-term rental definition. Neither are appropriate per Texas law, and leaving them in puts the city at risk of wasting money on future legal challenge. Patrick Kane, eleven-twenty-three East Cedar Street. I am requesting agenda item number seven be removed from the consent agenda so the public can understand the city's intent behind approving three additional license plate readers at a cost of seventy-eight thousand dollars. City Council knows this is a contentious issue, as many spoke out against the use of this technology in December two thousand and twenty-two, when additional license plate readers were proposed. Please provide us the courtesy of discussing why these are needed, what they will cost, what they will cost the city after the first year, and the status of the six license plate readers that were approved unilaterally by the mayor last year despite initially coming to City Council for approval.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone have a request for removal of an item from the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item seven for discussion.
Okay. Any others? If not, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda except for item number seven?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda plus item seven.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? Not we call for vote.
Aye.
Ward one, ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye at consent agenda except for item number seven is passed. Item number seven, deliberate and act on resolution, the city of Rockport, Texas authorizing Rockport Police Department to apply for an operate, Operation Lone Star grant program fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five administered by the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grants Division fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, and authorizing the mayor to act as the executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining participation in this grant program.
Mayor, I had sent a list of questions to the city manager earlier today from an email received from a constituent, and those questions were answered greatly, and I would just like those, I think Captain Anderson was going to answer those for us.
Captain Anderson, here's a question. People on this list.
First of all, Mayor, council appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to speak on this. I know Steve spoke a little bit about the Flock cameras that that are now operational within the city currently. This particular grant is for a grant that is going to fund, if it's approved, will fund two license plate readers that will be installed on our existing Stone Garden funded vehicles that we're in possession of now. They're not operational because they still need radios and some other equipment. These license plate readers will go on those vehicles, and the purpose of these Stone Garden grant-funded vehicles is to support border security. The Operation Lone Star is a grant that is state-funded. Operation Stone Garden is a grant that is federally funded. These vehicles are funded through the Operation Stone Garden federal funds. The license plate readers will be funded through the state grant. The vehicles typically are only used for border security, so they will be stationed primarily on the bypass thirty thirty-six and north on Highway thirty-five. These are not vehicles or license plate readers that you're going to see in your neighborhoods. Very rarely will you see them going down Business Highway. You've probably seen, if you've gone down the bypass, some Rockport marked police cars that are sitting on the side of the highway. Typically, those are vehicles that are out there that are supporting the border security for the state and for the United States. So that's what these license plate readers are going to be funded for. Some of the other concerns that that citizens have had is their privacy and how their privacy can be invaded with these license plate readers. Law enforcement can only search these license plate readers if they have a justifiable law enforcement investigative reason to do so. Everything is recorded on these systems, and and it is audited by myself quarterly, and it's audited by the chief yearly. Any, anything that we find in these systems where that's not supposed to be there will be investigated, and of course, officers can be disciplined. We can lose our membership in the Houston HIDA, which we have an M. O. U. with, who keeps this data and disseminates this data accordingly. Any information that we have is forwarded to the Houston HIDA, and that's, that is the, the Hidas throughout the United States. There are high-intensity drug trafficking areas, what it's called. These are state-funded organizations, law enforcement organizations that that operate and and enforce drug laws in these high-intensity areas. The ongoing maintenance fees was another question that that goes along with these license plate readers. They're, the first year of operation of these license plate readers is a one-year warranty. Afterward, there is a five-hundred-dollar fee to extend that warranty, and that's due every year for each system that we have. We have two of these already operational on our grant-funded vehicles. We're just almost at the one-year part, one-year moment of having these operational, and so we will be owing a thousand dollars for for those. If we get these three additional, that includes two license plate readers and one license plate trailer, which will be a static trailer, which many of you have probably seen by the weigh station. It's not our license plate reader, but is a Aransas County Sheriff's Department license plate reader. It's just a, it's a, it's another tool for our toolkit, much like many other things that we have on our tool belt in order to keep our community safe, and that's the purpose of these. As I mentioned, the trailers, in addition to the license plate readers, is a static. We can move that around as necessary. We can put it on the causeway. We can put it on thirty thirty-six. It's not something that you're going to find within the city, within a neighborhood, or anything like that. That's not the purpose of what these devices are are funded for, first of all. It has to have a nexus to the border. The Flock cameras, as we mentioned, are operational. They've been operational for about a month now. We are meeting with Flock just this week to go over how these systems operate, and it's, so it's not one hundred percent live yet, but they are operational at this time. With the system just, just barely coming online, it's something that we hope to see some results from very soon, so.
Questions, council?
Just these third and top. You said there's five of them?
There, we have two currently.
And if this is approved, there'll be three more.
There will be three more.
So it'll be five in total, at five hundred dollars apiece.
After the first year, there will be five hundred dollars apiece to extend the warranty.
Pretty much to maintain all five if they're.
Yeah, any kind of problems that go wrong with those during the warranty period, it will be repaired, replaced as needed. There's twenty-four-hour tech support for these systems that we've used on occasion at no cost.
Okay, thank you.
Captain, if you could explain, you know, simple mind firement. I believe the chief spoke to this last time, but the license plate reader, it has, it's looking for a hit, right? There's, the information has to be put in, and if that information is, if that suspect car drives by and the license plate reader reads it, that's the only time that you will, or they will receive a hit.
That's the only time that we will receive a hit. So if, if a city in another jurisdiction, the state, or even in the country, reports a stolen vehicle, that vehicle, if it's reported properly, goes into the NCIC is what it's called, and will receive a hit when that license plate comes across the license plate reader. That goes for stolen vehicles. That goes for amber alerts, silver alerts, robbery suspects, anything that any jurisdiction adds to that hot list, which has to be approved through D. P. S. for criminal investigation purposes, we would get a hit on that.
So you're not just going to track my license plate going to Walmart?
I, I, I cannot track your license plate going to Walmart. That would require me to actually punch in your license, know your license plate, first of all. Punch in your license plate, and I'd have to have a legal criminal investigation, justifiable reason to do so.
Thank you, sir.
And how long do you keep this on file?
So these aren't, this data will be kept through the Houston HIDA, and it's kept for thirty days before it is deleted, and it's not something that we keep ourselves. There was a question on cloud cost. This is, there's no cloud cost associated with this. Like I said, this all goes through the Houston HIDA.
Other questions?
Thanks, Captain.
For the record, Mr. Kane indicated in his letter there that the council did not act to approve these originally when we started using these cameras in cars, and that I unilaterally passed that myself. For one, that can't be done, and for two, it did not happen that way. That is either erroneous or misleading, because it was passed by this council. And I do support the use of cameras, the use of the cars, because I believe it's a wonderful asset for law enforcement, especially when they're shorthanded and working as hard as they can to do all that they can. But keeping up the stolen cars, cars used in crime and like that is a benefit that is good for our community, too. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item seven as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? Call for vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. We will conduct a public hearing. Consider request from Christopher J. Crowley and Kara A. Crowley for permanent closure, abandonment, and vacation of twenty-foot-wide alleyway lying between lots one through eight and lots nine through sixteen, block one thirty-four, Manning Edition, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, being zero point one eight acres. It is six forty-five, and we're in public hearing.
Yes, sir. We have received the appraisal value at a zero value, and.
That supports a zero dollar figure to be forwarded to Mr. Crowley. He has paid the fees necessary, the administrative fees, and he will be paying for the appraisal fee as required by charter, as given by ordinance.
All right. Questions, council? Is there anyone present that wants to address this item right now? This is a public hearing. If you'd like to talk about it, you can do so. If not, we'll close the public hearing. It is six forty-six. Took a minute. Counsel, do you have other questions? All right. Item number ten, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, and abandonment of zero point one eight acres of land being twenty-foot-wide alleyway lying between lots one through eight and lots nine through sixteen, block one thirty-four, Manning Edition, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, according to the platte recorded in volume one, page seven, platte records of Aransas County, Texas, providing for the terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deed for the zero point one eight acre to be closed, vacated, and abandoned, and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item ten as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further question? Not we'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number eleven, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map stipulated under Article four point one of the City of Rockport Zoning Ordinance, number ten twenty-seven, by changing the zoning of land from R. One, First Single Family Dwelling District, for property located at nine fourteen Holly Road and fifteen twenty-one State Highway Thirty-five Bypass, also known as McCombs, part of lots fourteen and fifteen, one point seven three zero acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B. One, General Business District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. No changes since first reading. Counsel, do you have questions?
I make a motion to approve agenda item number eleven as read.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not we'll call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Number twelve, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map stipulated under Article four point one, the City of Rockport Zoning Ordinance, number ten twenty-seven, by changing the zoning of land from R. One, Single Family Dwelling District, for property located at thirty-six twenty-nine Highway Thirty-five South, also known as A. One sixty James McKay Survey, being eight acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B. One, General Business District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. No changes. Any question? If not, we have a motion.
I'll move to approve item twelve as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not we'll call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number thirteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the purpose of small manufacturing business, which is building wood frame structures for resale on the property located at thirty-six twenty-nine Highway Thirty-five South, also known as A. One sixty James McKay Survey, being eight acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, subject to compliance with the conditions stated within this ordinance, as well as those stipulated in City of Rockport Code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Again, no changes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve agenda item number thirteen as read.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number fourteen, deliberate and act in second final reading of an ordinance in the City of Rockport, Texas, amending ordinance number nineteen eleven, which adopted the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for publication, providing for an effective date. Okay, no change. Any questions, council?
Move to approve item fourteen as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? We'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number fifteen, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordnances, Chapter twenty-six Businesses, by adding Article three, Short-Term Rentals, repealing all ordinances in, to the, to the extent they are in conflict, providing for severability, providing for penalties, providing for an effective date. I have two folks that want to address this item before we go into it. Miss, oh my goodness, Debbie? Yes, ma'am. Come right ahead.
About the ordinance for the S. T. Rs., and I want to thank you for all your hard work and effort that has gone into this. I have been not closely involved with it, but have been in touch with it since it began and was a supporter from the very beginning. I have a home on Key Allegro, and although I think the ordinance is not as strong as I would like it to be, we have to start somewhere, and this is a very good start. This problem is only going to continue to grow and grow as Rockport becomes a larger vacation destination for many of our friends and neighbors to the north or south of us, people coming in to enjoy all the amenities that we have. And I'm, and I'm very glad they're coming. It supports the city and gives us an opportunity to showcase what a great community we are. I am in favor of the S. T. Rs. very strongly in favor of the S. T. Rs., as I have a home that is between two rental homes on Key Allegro. And I can tell you that in the twenty-three years I've lived there, it really, problems really didn't start until around two thousand and ten, but many of the renters that come in are people who do not care about the community or how they leave the community. And I have had trash in my yard. I have had cars parked in front of my driveway. One house next door had eighteen people in it one weekend, including a thirty-four-foot R. V., drivable R. V. trailer that they parked in the driveway, and it stuck out in the street about five feet. So there are lots of other stories like mine, and I'm glad that we are finally trying to do something to rein in the bad elements that want to give this rental industry a bad name. I'm not opposed to people renting their homes. They perfectly fine if that's what they want to do, but when it infringes upon me and my home and destroys my property, then I am concerned. And one of the big concerns is the parking. Too many people claim that a house will sleep fifteen people, and all of a sudden you have fifteen Ford F. One fifties parked on your street, because everybody has to bring their own truck. So I hope you will continue to look at the ordinance as the future comes forward and move to strengthen some of the elements of it, but I'm very happy that we are starting this, and I wholeheartedly support you for it.
Thank you, ma'am. The clock didn't start, but I bet you're right at three minutes. All right, Mr. Jim Rester?
I'm Jim Rester. I live at one one oh five South Pizano in Rockport. And, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak. I attended the workshop in Key Allegro when the first night we had that out there, and I heard the conversation, and you've been told that the Texas Supreme Court has ruled that you cannot restrict short-term rentals. That presentation is strategically orchestrated by Airbnb and V. R. B. O. and others in that industry to take advantage of small towns that don't have large legal departments and are hungry for hot taxes. What was not mentioned is that that court ruling was in two thousand and sixteen. The court ruling dealt with the power of HOAs more than it dealt with the power of cities to regulate. What else not mentioned is that in the ensuing eight years, cities with their own legal staffs have been able to control the destruction of neighborhoods by basing permits for S. T. Rs. upon zoning. Neither Dallas, Fort Worth, nor Waco, nor Arlington, nor Galveston will permit the destruction of neighborhoods. No S. T. Rs. in the single family residential R. One neighborhoods, period. In the last legislature, companion bills were presented to prevent Texas cities from banning short-term rentals. The bills failed to pass. They did not pass them. So what I'm asking is that you table this ordinance until the legal standing becomes clear, and if you have to have it now, base it on zoning. So what's, what's at stake here? Most residential neighborhoods like yours and like mine were designed to be permanent home where residents could raise your family and foster a sense of community, safety, and security. You lose that when you allow short-term transient tenants. You lose your quality of life, and you lose the fabric of the community. In our neighborhood, like your neighborhood, we have that, we have that sense, and we know and we look out for each other. We take in each other's trash cans. We look out for each other when someone's ill. It's truly like life in a small town. It's been suggested that we allow S. T. Rs. anywhere and everywhere. We just have to enforce the laws and ordinances. We all know that on a busy weekend in Rockport, there aren't enough officers to do that. If there's a huge party next door to you, and people are parking in your yard, and profane rap music is keeping your children awake, you're on your own. You either sit in your house and seethe, or go tell a bunch of drunks to be quiet. You know what happens next.
Mr. Rester, your three minutes just ran out.
Okay.
You can.
Okay.
Finish, finish your sentence.
I, I will. You know what happens next, and the cavalry's not coming. I ask that you take a deep breath and get this right. You will not be able to undo a mistake on this. Once barriers are crossed and dollars are invested, we're done.
Thank you, sir. Questions, council? Come on, Mr. Dietrich.
Hey, evening.
Carrie Dietrich, Community Planner. Do you have questions? We do have a presentation, if you want to do that.
Yeah, if you'll just allow me a second. We, the ordinance is a, unfortunately, you are in town, unfortunately. We think based on the input. We think based on the input from this meeting, the company, the STRs, will make significant enough changes that we need to take it back to first reading. So, the first reading you had is basically null and void. You have new changes, you have new information, and Carrie will walk through that for you.
I will, oops. Okay. So, we did a little presentation just to give some history. I'm ready. I don't know how to do this, but I'll try. Just point and click? It's not up there. Okay. Which one? Okay. So, short-term rental discussion. As you recall, we had, thanks, several town hall meetings, four to be exact, one for each ward, back in January of '23, and we got a lot of really good input. Like, over 200 of our questionnaires were answered, and a lot of folks showed up. I was actually very pleased with the participation. Our questionnaires, can't read it from there. I just put up the most common response on the questions, and of course, the number of benefits, what is the number one benefit? Most people said hot taxes. What was the number one issue? Noise and parking and trash were the most responses. If you were in charge of short-term rentals, some of those I couldn't put up there, but they were rather humorous. They would address tenant noise, parking, and occupancy violations. And what was your expectation of the city regarding STRs? They just want us to enforce the rules and collect hot tax. And they want to know, what did we miss? And actually, the most common response to that was to consider the HOA's rules about STRs and not override them, which I don't think that we do in this ordinance. Got 150 responses, but they're actually about 200. 60% of them were in favor of an STR, 37% wanted no STR ordinance, and 3% were undecided. We did create a registration form. I'm not sure if there was a copy in your packet. If not, I'd be happy to send it to you so you can look it over, and it will be available by email or hard copy, and they'll be able to fill it out online if they choose to. The registration fee, we settled on $150 for the initial registration, which is good for a year, and then $100 annually after that. Now, we can change that. That's just our recommendations. Y'all just let me know what you want. We did look at all the other cities, and some of them were outrageous at like $4.50 every year, and some were only $50 a year, so we just tried to kind of go in a median.
Well, and we have to weigh that with $50 per inspection.
Inspection fees.
We think if we get the registration that we need at $100 per STR, that should pay for everything necessary to run the monitoring of the regulation, registration, the software, things like that, so. It wasn't a shot, total shot in the dark, no, but we tried to get close and as fair as possible.
I also looked at, this is a sample of the average monthly filings that people file when they pay their hot taxes. If, whether they rented or not, they've got to file the report, I'm told, and we average about 170 reports a month for hot taxes. When we got, or talked to the RentalScape group, which is the program that we want to use, they ran their program, and they see hundreds of the sites where people send their ads to rent their homes, for STRs, and they found in the very short time that they ran it, 1,685 live STR listings, which estimated about 750 short-term rentals in Rockport, because some of them, you know, they list on numerous sites, so you don't count the listing, you count the actual rental. So, out of the 700, approximate 750 STRs, we're receiving hot tax from an average of 175 monthly, so we're losing money, and it's not fair to those folks that are being honest and doing, paying their taxes. So, that's the end of that. So, the new ordinance that's in front of you, we did make some changes, and mostly, let's see, we added an exception for STRs that are using accessory buildings. It's a violation of code, specifically says that an accessory-use building cannot be used as a rental, but these folks have been operating for several years. No one's told them they can't. They've not been given a violation notice. They probably didn't know they were there, but they're, if they're paying their hot tax, they don't have any complaints against them. We felt like there should be an exception to allow them to continue, and they have to show proof of it. They, you know, show us your reports that you've been paying your hot tax, that you've owned this property for a year or more, and then I think they'll be considered nonconforming, legal nonconforming.
The appropriate channel to change the mother-in-law rental is through the P&Z.
Yes.
So, this is just until something is done on that end or a decision is made not to. We gave some relief to the people that have been using it. We, actually, I drove around, and we have a lot of mother-in-laws in this town, so that's why we stuck that in there to kind of give some relief in that area.
Right, but if they've been operating legally, no complaints, we wanted to try to grandfather them. We did change the adult, age of an adult to 18 years. That's what it states in the state property code. That's the code that is specific to owner-tenant situations. I personally don't like that, but if they fill the house up with a bunch of 17-year-olds, I think our other ordinances will take care of the noise and the trash. The PD might get called, but we left it at 18. We removed the requirement for an affidavit of no change and just added that a live inspection needs to occur every two years. That's the simplest thing to do. We can ensure that they still have all their safety features and their fire extinguishers and their smoke detectors. We established the initial registration fee of $150, which is valid for 12 months. We changed that from two years because it was just too hard to track, apparently. We changed the code reference, we also, the annual renewal fee of $100. The code reference for parking, we changed to our code, which is Section 118, 21.1.1, that specifies parking per use. So, a single-family dwelling is required to have two parking spaces, whether it's three-bedroom or two-bedroom or less. Townhomes are required to have two spaces, manufactured homes required to have two parking spaces. Now, efficiency, one-bedroom or less, is only required to have one and a half, so maybe that's for a golf cart or those little cars, I don't know. So, we changed it to that because it was more valid and easier to track. And we did change the written appeal timeframe to 30 days and appeal to council to 30 days. Give some more time, because the timeframe was a little tight. I did forget to take out the daytime guest verbiage in the descriptions, but I will do that, that will come out. So, that's basically the majority of the things that we fixed.
Questions? You have a one go? Go on.
They're all in your area, Brad, so go for it. Just real quick, go back one more slide, the number, there you go, the number of filings, and some of the citizens that have come forward, you know, they were frustrated, they're like, I follow the rules, I file, I do all this, and I think we were trying as a council to articulate, we get that, like, we have a lot of really good business owners, we have good operators in this community, we have a lot of folks doing the right thing, but we knew that we have a lot that clearly aren't, so I think this kind of helps articulate that to show clearly, we have a lot of folks that are running under the radar. Now, whether the next slide at the 750, if that all pans out, because we'll have some folks that'll come back and say, well, maybe I rented it out for a month, but I'm no longer going to do that, and that's okay, but I mean, this is a big, it's a big difference. Yeah, so what do you say, 170, 174, and then the 750 is what you think is reasonable?
There'll be a swing in there, but it's still going to be significant. I mean, even if you take that, you know, we only have 50% of the board.
And then, I guess one question or just for clarification, will you please explain the difference between I'm renting my house as a long-term rental scenario versus what makes it an STR? And I know you've explained it before, but just one more time.
A short-term rental is less than 30 days.
So, if you rent your house to someone for a weekend, a week, three weeks, that's a short-term rental. If you rent your home to someone for 30 days or more, that's a long-term rental and is not required to pay the hot tax. So, then that's the difference, but generally, they're weekends or a week, and from what I can tell, most of them, they're not, they're not big partiers and stuff, they're families, but they still don't know the rules. We still have to give them our ordinances and tell them the rules, and they should be paying the hot tax. There was another comment about RVs. The clarification on that, if you take your RV to an RV park and you rent a space for three days, that's not a short-term rental. You own your RV. It belongs to you, but if an RV park sets up RVs that they own and they rent those to somebody for a weekend or a week, that is a short-term rental, whether it's an RV or not. You couldn't put it in your backyard because by code, you're not allowed to do that, period, an RV at all, but that's, I think the confusion was that they thought we were counting the RV park RVs as short-term rentals, and that's not the case. They own their RV, they bring it there for a weekend, that's not a short-term rental. They're renting a space. It's the ones that we've been told, and I've been told by several individuals, of RVs that are being set up in the RV park by the owner or someone else that owns that RV, but then they're renting it out to other people for weekends and stuff. That's a short-term rental, no matter how you look at it, so that's why I put them in that description specifically.
Just to clarify, a lot of HOA where I live.
Yes.
There is verbiage in there that protects HOA with their pre-existing.
We don't preempt the HOA with anything we're doing.
No.
Yep.
If your HOA disallows it, it's disallowed. There's nothing in here that allows anything over the HOA.
Yes, just want to make sure they clarify. Mm-hmm, just want to clarify that to make sure that they understand.
Right, so when they register, that's a question. Where they're locating, where they're located, we would research that, because I think it's, Harbor Oaks has something from STRs are not allowed, and we would check to see where they're located, and the HOA doesn't allow it, I can't give them a permit, a registration, so.
If you have an HOA that allows short-term rentals.
That disallows.
No, let's say they allow short-term rentals. Because we have some apartments that have them at San Andrews.
Then they would register.
So, they have to register those apartments?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, sir, there are a few questions. The parking ordinance, the minimum is two per single-family unit, correct? What is the maximum? There's not a maximum for parking in a single-family?
Well.
I guess that's where we're at.
We don't have an ordinance either that can't park on the sidewalk. You can obstruct traffic, you can't block sidewalks. Now, blocking out the sidewalk, just your standard traffic. But you can fit 27 cars. In your driveway, you can fit 27 cars, but if you block the sidewalk or you block the road, you block neighbor, then you're in violation, and cops will show up for you if someone calls them.
Yes.
And then, the, let's see, it's number, the zoning district classification of the property to be verified by the Building Development Services.
Yes.
Can we put in there that the person, the applicant should submit their, you know, have their zoning documentation all ready? That way, it saves y'all time? Is that something that's?
You can, but they won't.
They won't.
No one seems to know what their zoning is. We answer those questions every day.
I hear that. I did have a lot of good conversations over this STR ordinance over the last two years.
Yes.
It's been a long time coming, a lot of hard work's been put into it. Also received a lot of good discussion today. I think the ordinance as it is, is a great start, and I know we're going to revisit it along the way.
We have to come back in a year.
In a year to revisit.
And look at it.
I think ultimately, this would maybe taken care of with zoning changes, you know, are we still doing a consulting for zoning and P&Z stuff this year?
What do you mean?
What's your question?
With P&Z, are we doing something with P&Z this year as far as educating on?
Oh, yes, yes, we have some training set up, just waiting on the schedule.
Okay.
Matter of fact, we were going to invite counsel if they would like to join us for that.
I'd just think some of these things should, could be taken care of with maybe zoning as far as where STRs could and shouldn't be allowed.
Well, I think this first year's going to be more of a practice run than anything, to see how it works. I know that some cities do not allow STRs in their single-family residential neighborhoods. They don't. I think they've been thought about it, and you have more information on that than I do, but.
Right, I mean, it's, the problem is that it's still considered the same use.
Right.
So, kind of zoning them out in different zones would probably cause a challenge to be erased.
Other questions? No, sir, you didn't fill out anything asking to speak.
Thank you. You can call me at the office tomorrow.
I really appreciate the process that we've gone through. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Vanessa. I think we talked about it once or twice or 20 times, but I think this is a good process that the council and staff has followed to solicit input from the community. We can't make everybody happy in every aspect, but I think this is a good compromise and a good step in the right direction. I'm in support of it, you know, it's a trial period. I think getting the registration, I think having a mechanism for neighbors who have concerns to be able to come forward, and hopefully, we can better track that and better address those and ensure that our enforcement is better than it has been. We'll have better clarity on how big the problem is after we take this step. Could we be challenged? Yeah, I mean, everything that we do could be challenged, but I think we've made a good faith effort to try to reduce that liability as best we can by still meeting the intent of the project and the desire of the community that we've so much heard from, and I looked at Councilman Vindret and Councilwoman Hatman. I mean, you guys have the biggest chunk of this and the most vocal portion of the community that's having problems, so if you guys are in support of it, I'm glad to help move this forward.
I just wanted to clarify, I know you had said you were going to be removing the daytime visitors from the occupants, correct? Because the only, one of the big concerns that was brought to my attention is, you know, I have certain properties in my area that hold events, so their daytime occupancy is a big concern for their property, so just clarification on the, under definition of the daytime visitors will be removed out of that section or?
Certain persons who have rented the short-term rental for a specified period and the overnight occupants. We talked about that last time, like, I'm not going to tell Brad he can't have a backyard barbecue, so I'm not going to tell your STR owner that they can't have a backyard barbecue. If they get rowdy, I'm going to do the same thing I'm going to do with Brad and call the cops, so. It's just because you wore blue.
Seeing those and going over that and giving them that time and attention, so thank you.
This is not the first time that these things have been considered, and over the years, having been here a long time, we have talked about this kind of thing in the past, and it just never did go anywhere. I appreciate the folks that have come down that are involved in this kind of business, but we have to regulate this somehow because the issues have not got any better over the last 30 years, and it's a growing phenomenon. Every community seems to have more of this than they've ever had before, and I think that the folks that have worked on this, the people that came in for the hearings and so forth, have given us a whole lot of really good information, and it's been hashed over and over and gone back, and while we have some folks that will say it's not strong enough, others will say it's too strong, and I understand that. It's a matter of where you're looking at it from, but we need to do something to regulate this, and I think this is a good step in the right direction in this first reading. If we have other questions, they can come up for the next one. Are there any other questions?
I make a motion to approve item 15 as the first reading as read today.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward one. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three. Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Passage unanimous. I'm number sixteen, to liberate an act on the Heritage District Certificate appropriateness application submitted for four oh six South Austin Street to extend the wood fence enclosure to coastal mercantile. Yes, ma'am.
This is Clara, this year, to speak on her behalf.
But I want to tell you, this is basically the same type of fence that we approved for Rock Bottom. Thank you. And they did the big pretty mural on it and stuff, so, and it's more than fifty percent wood. By our Heritage District rules, it can't be more than fifty percent wood, so I could not approve it, and that's why I'm asking you guys to look at it. So would you all come up and tell them about it?
You didn't have to speak. Sorry.
I know. That's okay. I'm so happy to be here. Thank you, guys, for listening to us tonight on this issue. So, yes, we replatted our property, which was two lots behind our location at four oh six South Austin Street, which is the coastal mercantile, and our intention is to extend our fence line. We are very grateful that we have a lot of families and children that are with their parents, enjoying our location on the weekends, and so our intent is to push our fence out a little bit to make our play area larger. We're going to add more picnic tables and have some things for kiddos to do back there, and we're very excited about that. The feedback's been very positive from our Rockport families, so we're real excited about that, and we would appreciate your consideration and letting us do that. It would be very similar to what Rock Bottom has done with the vertical-style wood fencing. And Jennifer is actually here with me because we are working with Arcad to hopefully beautify that fence even further by incorporating a mural on the outside facing streetscape. And then on the inside, we are going to give our kiddos an opportunity to have their own mural facing inward towards our property where they can actually have a chalk drawing wall on facing our side into the property. So we're real excited about all of that, and we think it'll be an asset to the community.
Questions, council?
I move to approve item sixteen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. I'm number seventeen, to liberate an act on submission of application by the city of Rockport, Texas for a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit for possible future project that will include upgrades and improvements to Tule Creek. I have one letter where someone wants to discuss something, and Mr. Barron, if you'll come up to the mic and tell us who you are again, we'll be glad to hear you.
I'm Ken Barron. I live at four oh two Cascades. I'm a director of the Country Club HOA and represent six hundred and fifty properties there pertaining to drainage issues. And I'm here specifically to endorse proceeding with item seventeen. It includes upgrades and improvements to Tule Creek specifically. In our interest, we'd like to see a much larger detention pond. July of 2021, we had a big storm, had twenty-seven inches of rain over a three-day period. We have twenty detention ponds in the Country Club. They all overflowed, which is fine because they're detention ponds, and the water spilled out into the golf course, which is fine because it's designed as an auxiliary detention pond. But then it continued to rise and flooded our streets to the point where you couldn't get emergency vehicles down some of the streets. We flooded twenty-one houses, and what we need to do is take the water that was in those homes and in those streets and put it in a properly-designed detention pond, specifically Agenda Item number seventeen. So we need Agenda Item seventeen. Not only will it help the Country Club, but it will help the rest of the Tule Creek watershed area. So I hope you all strongly approve item seventeen. In addition to that, I'm going to continue to request funding to fix the drainage issues associated with the Country Club. When we had the flood, our drainage system was operating at sixty percent of capacity. The city has been helpful in resolving some of the issues, but we still have work to do there, and we need your support, and specifically, we need funding money to solve the problems. I've brought a updated report for distribution. You'll all get a copy that specifically identifies how the drainage system works, how we flooded, why we flooded specifically, whatever the issues that caused the flooding, recommendations for fixing those issues, and estimated cost in order to resolve that. And I know nobody can guarantee we will never flood again, but we can guarantee we can get our drainage system to work at a hundred percent capacity, and we need your assistance specifically in funding in order to make that happen. And thank you for your support today. Thank you.
Counsel, what's your opinion? Mike? I didn't see him up there.
As you know, we've been working with the folks from Clean Coast, Texas and other organizations within Aransas County and throughout the state to try to improve the overall stormwater management and drainage within Aransas County. And specifically, like I said, we've been working with Clean Coast, Texas. I have Mr. Dan Updike here today, and I'll ask Dan to come up and speak specifically about this proposed project that we'd like to seek grant funding for as part of the seeking of the grant funding. It does require an Army Corps of Engineers permit. So tonight, we're just asking you to approve the submission of the application for the Army Corps permit, and I'll ask Mr. Updike to come and explain what we're going to do here if we do get the grant. So, Dan?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Dan Updike. I'm an engineer with a consulting firm called Anchor QEA. I'm based in Austin, but we do have twelve folks here in Rockport. Some of you may know Charlie Belair and his staff, so they're part of our company at this time. I'd like to talk, as Mike mentioned, about a proposed enhancement to Tule Lake. I think you all have a handout. This map should be in front of you. Super okay. So what we're talking about is Tule Lake, of course, it's just west of Business Thirty-Five, between the Walmart and Ace Hardware. This project is funded by the Texas General Land Office, and it came about as a result of a grant application that was supported by stakeholders in Aransas County a couple of years ago. The grant was awarded from the General Land Office to the Meadows Center at Texas State University up in San Marcos, so they kind of manage the program, and they selected Anchor QEA to help lead the engineering elements of this effort. The goal of the project is to do stormwater improvements in Tule Creek to benefit the water quality in Tule Creek and in Little Bay. So this is primarily a water quality project, although it does have flood benefits as well. So Anchor QEA is leading the engineering work. I'd like to also recognize our subconsultants on this project. So Duset and Associates out of San Antonio is helping us with this, as are Griffith and Brundrette here locally has been helping a lot on this project with the surveying. We had a series of meetings with the Aransas County Stormwater and Flood Plane Management Advisory Committee, so your staff participate in that committee. We spoke with them multiple times, kicked around various ideas for a suitable stormwater project for this grant, right? It had to fit the needs of the stakeholders, the locals, and also the requirements of the grant funding, and we selected an expansion of Tule Lake for this. So I want to draw your attention now to the map and just walk through a few elements. We've got primarily, the construction activities here will be digging, so expanding the existing lake. We've got Tule Creek coming in from the southwest, the Tule North Ditch coming down from the north. If you look, it's a little bit hard to see, but if you look as Tule Creek comes into the lake, there's a kind of a dark blue oval. That's a sediment for bay, so that's a designated area where most of the sediments will settle out. And that's important for water quality purposes, and it's important that it happens there because it's easy, it will be easy for the city to maintain that area. They'll be able to go in with equipment periodically, dig that out as the years go by, and maintain this, the stormwater treatment of this facility. We've got an expanded lake. We've got these green peninsulas, if you will, coming in called Finger Dykes, so they help the water move slowly through the system, expose the water to wetlands, again, removing sediments, removing nutrients before the water goes downstream to Little Bay. Want to draw your attention in particular to two orange areas on the south side of the lake. One is kind of triangular-shaped, a little bit brighter orange. That's a possible access corridor for construction. We don't actually intend to use that. We've got it on the map as a placeholder, and we've got it in the permit application as a placeholder, but the city has been using the route from Patton Street in the, kind of the bottom left of your figure, that yellow strip along the creek. The city's been using that for maintenance purposes, and we expect that to continue. But we do have that kind of triangular shape as a placeholder in our permit application if it becomes necessary. We know that's a highly-valued oak mat. We don't intend, again, we don't intend to use that. It's a placeholder. The other kind of slightly darker orange area between the lake and the Walmart, we do intend to use that in a kind of a very specific purpose. We expect hydraulic dredging most likely to be used to dredge out this lake, so that's where they mix the sediment with water into a slurry and they pipe it. And so what we plan there is the expectation is there would be a temporary, most likely plastic pipe going from the lake to this vacant, I call it vacant, but unwooded, kind of grassy, shrubby area on the north side of Walmart. So there would be a pipe to go over there to create a temporary area to de-water that slurry. So those impacts would be temporary. As mentioned, this design project is funded by the General Land Office. We're expected to wrap up our work this summer. Once our design is complete, the next step would be construction. As Mike mentioned, we don't have construction funds right now, but the project team is looking for grant opportunities that could pay for all or at least a portion of the construction cost for this project. Before anybody could do construction, we need a permit, so that's the subject really of tonight. We need to submit an Army Corps of Engineers permit to allow this project to potentially go forward. The city is the landowner here, so you're the logical entity to be the permit applicant. So I'm here tonight, as Mike mentioned, to ask for your approval to allow staff to sign and submit a permit application for this project. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just kind of want a little background. I've been going to the meetings of stormwater. We've talked various times, and I know you have done, we've gone over a couple of different projects that we could have possibly have done to help with that, with what you guys are trying to accomplish with Tule Creek and that stuff, and that's been going on for at least two years. I've been talking to Mr. Belair for at least three or four years, just trying to even figure out grant funding for this. So I do appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing and that you guys are not taking this lightly, and you're trying to look at every outlet. It's going to be the best for our community, so I do appreciate that. So I just want to clarify, if this is just for the permit today, for us to allow to get the permit, that's what you were stating?
That's correct.
Yes, and with us doing that help with grant funding, is that like going to be a big help to, on grant applications in the future?
Yes. Most entities that are looking at grant applications, you know, they get a lot in, they get in more applications than they have money for, but if they see that a project has a permit or at least a permit in process, that's a very positive benefit to the review of that application.
That's all I have right now.
Questions I have were, so the cost to develop the permit, submit the permit, that's all being taken care of already through the existing funding mechanism?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if you could go back, you talked about this being more of a water quality project versus a flood control. So for future funding, to me, having a nexus on flood control is probably likely to, or easier to find funding for mitigation money, things like that. So could you just kind of clarify what you see as the difference between flood control versus water quality for us?
Yeah, that's a very fair question. So again, the emphasis here, based on the original grant application from a couple of years ago, was on improvements to the water quality in Tule Creek and Little Bay. Because we're digging, we are providing some flood benefits, and so this might be eligible for flood funding, if you will, but it's certainly one of those projects that checks two boxes, and so a lot of funding entities will look very favorably upon that. Now, the General Land Office that's funding this current effort, the design effort, they are a possibility for funding the construction, and that's, you know, we've been speaking with the GLO about that, and there's a grant opportunity coming up in June that might work out for this project.
Dan, we're confirming we're going to do everything we can to save all the trees possible in that area. We're removing some of the invasive species, but keeping all the oaks, as many as we can, right?
Yeah, the lake area that you see here doesn't have any oaks in it, so it's got three or four willows, a couple of palms, but the oaks are really at the upper elevations, and we're not, we're not cutting into that. Again, it looks a little bit scary, but we don't intend to use that orange triangle. It's, when you go for permits with the Army Corps, you don't want to ask for this and then have to come back later and ask for a little bit more, because then you got to start back at the beginning. You want to ask for a little bit more than you think you might need, and then come in as your project be a little bit less. Does that make sense? It just makes the permitting smoother. So we don't expect to use that, but we've got it in the permit application. The other area, the darker orange, would be a temporary pipe to a de-watering area in a piece of the property that does not have oaks.
All right. Okay. One of the things that I have seen and been privileged to be there when it was going on is ongoing work between people from the different entities here that are trying as best we can to address the problems that the community has as opposed to the city or the county or Fulton or whatever. And this kind of project is one of those kind of projects. It's obvious that this is a benefit to the community. It's not just the people that live in the Country Club area or that. The water quality in Little Bay is vitally important to our community, and it's important to the county, it's important to all of us, and this is one of those projects, I think, that are necessary. And it's, things like this are what we need to work on as a community to get these done, and I'm glad that the work is being done. I'm glad that you have the funding to get the study done, and I believe that this is an outstanding project for us and look forward to seeing it done. Other questions?
I make a motion to approve item seventeen.
I have a motion and a second.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or debate? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
And four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Happy to do it. Congratulations. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I do have the paperwork that's set up for Mr. Donahoe to sign, but we can reprint it for somebody else's signature if that's your preference, so. We can, or we can figure that out later, that's fine, too. We'll rewrite it for the mayor, and we'll get it to you for signature shortly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm number eighteen, to liberate and possible approval of an engagement agreement with Willdan to provide a 2024 water and wastewater rate study.
Mayor, council, this is a result of our reviewing of the recent out-of-district water and wastewater rates. There's very few companies that actually do the in-depth study that we need. One of them is New Gen, who did our previous study, another one is Willdan, and so our commitment was to fit it off of the previous to maybe get some unbiased data, and so that's where I came in, that was Dan Jackson, and then he's given us the proposal, as you see in your packet, and I think it goes into the depth that we are interested in. The total cost of that is seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars, so I would ask for your consideration and approval. So, I would ask for your consideration with that. Additionally, on the next side, there will be a budget amendment to fill those funds from utility fund reserves.
All right, counsel?
It says there ninety-day preliminary results, or ninety days to have something preliminary to back to you. Is that?
It's going to be very preliminary. Through our discussion, I mean, it'll be kind of an ongoing back and forth for quite a while. Like I said, I've asked him to go pretty deep in depth into what we're charging, what we need to be charging, where we need to be for the next several years. So, he will have us something in ninety days, but it'll be very preliminary.
I guess my concern will be for future budget. Does that start about the time you start probably working on budget for twenty-four, twenty-five? Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, that's what that'll be. We'll have a preliminary, you know, place to start. He'll have a few more months to work, and we'll have numbers to work on, so.
All right. Anyone else?
I move to approve item eighteen as presented.
I have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Unanimous. Item number nineteen, deliberate an act on first reading of an ordinance of the city of Rockport, Texas, amending ordinance number nineteen eleven, which adopted the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict here with providing for publication, providing for an effective date. Yes, sir?
I'm telling off of what Vanessa just said. This is the first reading of an ordinance, one to fund, to help fund the full rate study that Vanessa spoke about. And from a timeline standpoint, I think it's ninety days once we get the deliverables to them. They requested a lot of information, and we're feverishly putting that together to get to them as quickly as possible. But it's extensive, and it is going to be a long back and forth as well. Second item here is to amend the hot funds budget for five hundred thousand. In last year's projected budget presentation, we were expecting to have spent that five hundred thousand before year end. So, we didn't budget for it this year. And so, we think we're going to be able to spend that this year. So, this is just putting that five hundred thousand back in. And so, that's what we're requesting to approve the budget amendment for from the first reading.
Okay. Counsel?
I move to approve item nineteen as presented.
I have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any question? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Unanimous. Portion counsel?
I don't have so much to report, essentially.
Ward two?
Attended TMZ, I believe it was last Monday. It was great. The whole dais was filled with people. We had, it was great. It was really good to have our two new representatives there and jumping in. So, I know you're excited. I see you just beaming over there. So, more work to do on that, and I think everybody is enthusiastic about kind of what the future holds for their group. Beyond that, I think that's about it for council work. We had a successful livestock show. That's what I ditched y'all out for last city council meeting. Our Aransas County, Rockport, Fulton, I C U did absolutely phenomenal. The special show was great. We had folks that were ag mechanics, you know, homemaking, arts and crafts, photography, the full gamut of just really amazing talent. And our community has a lot to be proud of. So, I was very glad to be able to be there and help work as a volunteer. And I did miss y'all. Maybe not a whole lot, but I did miss y'all. But anyways, that's all I've got, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Had the pleasure of attending the Lamarde Grau parade with the mayor, and my daughter was with us. She was excellent at throwing Lamarde Grau beads along with the mayor at all the unsuspecting people standing out there on the side of the street, poor people. Anyway, Lamarde Grau was awesome. The parade was great. It was good getting out to Lamar, getting across the bridge and seeing everybody out there. Anyway, we had a great time. That's all I have.
I attended the Tourism Development Council with the Chamber, which I'm liaison. And the biggest thing that coming out that kind of affects the city is going to be they're trying to become a music city, a music designated city, which means that we get a database through the governor's office, giving us, you know, musicians that would like to come down to our community. They're still looking for that designation, working with them, and they haven't achieved a hundred percent of it, but it's very close. So, that's the biggest thing coming out of that for us. Also, I've been working with Seabass, which is the coastal bend association of stormwater. That's what it is, and Aransas Land Trust. And we are looking to do a meet and greet green infrastructure on February twenty-ninth. And we're going to do, it's going to be a mixed, like, it's going to be an after-hours meet and greet, and we're going to have panelists. What we're talking about is just basically having your green infrastructure meet with your development and just making sure that we have options for these developers coming in, that there's, you know, ways that can help the community at the same time as you coming in here and making sure that we keep our infrastructure green. So, if anyone wants to look into more of that, we are going to be sending invites soon. And that is about it on my end.
As Brad said, it was nice being in Lamar parade. Being from northeast Texas, I'm not accustomed to swatting mosquitoes in February during the parade. But we also swatted some in December when we had the Christmas parade, too. Anyway, but it was really nice.
They had insect repellent. They were passing out, and everybody sprayed down, and we all smelled good. And it was a great time. They put a good show on over in Lamar, and those people worked really hard at it, and it was good being there. It is nice to be back in the council meeting. I missed, I think, just one with, my wife had knee replacement surgery. If you have to live with somebody that has knee replacement surgery, you need somebody that does like my wife. When it gets to hurting, she takes a pain pill and goes to sleep. And that's really nice because they don't have to hurt and let everybody else know about it. She's done great. She's feeling well. But anyway, while all that was going on, we were all going to hospitals and seeing doctors and all sorts of stuff. It's just that time of year. I appreciate being here. I appreciate the council and the work they do. I don't have anything else. The city council will hold an executive session pursuant to provisions of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultations with attorney, seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and on matter of which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules and professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Number one, city hall. Number two, Concho Street, general land office drainage projects. And section five point five one, five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters, deliberate, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, the city secretary. It is.
Mayor and council, I don't have anything new to report in the second session unless somebody has questions.
All right. Nobody has any questions. I feel real good about that. Forget what I just read. We're not through. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. It is seven forty-seven.